For which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments for items that are not on the agenda for anyone that is here? There are none. So, we have a proclamation for Lynn Meyer, who has been working with the village for a very long time. I'm going to read it just as it is. It's a proclamation of recognition of 20 years of service to the Village of Heartland by Lynn Meyer. Whereas administration employee Lynn Meyer has loyally served the Village of Heartland residents for 20 years as deputy clerk, having been hired on May 26, 1997. Whereas Lynn Meyer has provided excellence in customer service as she filled the role of deputy clerk, preparing countless agendas and minutes, processing various licenses and permits, and maintaining volumes of shelter reservations and field schedules. And whereas Lynn Meyer has demonstrated dedication to Heartland residents by providing assistance in the administration of elections, including five presidential election cycles, managing the ever-increasing demands of absentee ballot requests. And whereas Lynn Meyer has been an asset to our community, and while she will be missed, her retirement after 20 years of service is well-deserved. Now therefore, the village board for the Village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Lynn Meyer upon her retirement and encourages all residents to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for her service. If you want to. Come on up. Thank you for everything you do.
Wait, wait. Okay. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good admission.
People like you help make it what it is, so thank you.
What about us?
Impatient.
Congratulations, Lynn.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ma'am, it's always been a pleasure. You've always been a cheerful person at the county.
Thank you again, Lynn. All right, next we have a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the August 14, 2017 meeting.
Also move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payment in the amount of $677,228.15.
I move we pay the bills for $677,228.15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Stake.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration for actions related to licensing and permits. We have two bartenders licenses for Abigail Anson and Stacy Glassy. Those will be expiring on June 30, 2018.
I make a motion to approve those two licenses.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Those are granted. Next item is a street use permit for Anna Bedone at 479 Park Court.
Also move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is granted, and that is carried. Next items are items referring from the August 21, 2017 plan commission meeting. Items related to the request to construct a storage building located at Heartland Meadows Retirement Apartments at 357 Cottonwood Avenue. We will start that with opening a public hearing related to an amendment to the PUD agreement, so that we will open now.
So I will remind the village board what we're talk- Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Oh, what we're talking about here. The Heartland Meadows senior housing development is- was approved many years ago via the planned unit development process, which is sort of a negotiated, if you will, zoning process. Its underlying zoning is appropriate at the- one of the downtown multifamily districts, but to increase the density and do seniors and a variety of other pieces of that puzzle, the process, the planned unit development process was used. In the original proposal that was made to change and to add the storage unit, the building would have been located on essentially the north side of the building. Recently, the owner, in beginning the process of staking that out, realized that perhaps that's not the best location and asked the village's plan commission to consider an alternate location. So a week ago today, the plan commission considered a location that I'll call is east of the building, in an area that was formerly occupied by- or was intended at the approval of the planned unit development to be occupied by some recreational facilities, shuffleboard and perhaps horseshoe pits and things of that sort. Those facilities were never installed, and I think Mr. Dedenko would testify, so to speak, that his residents are not calling for those things at this point. He would like to put the storage building there. It's a better location for the building. It's a flatter site. It probably doesn't infringe on any drainage routes or that sort of thing. So his request is to move that building, to relocate the site for that building. It is not constructed at this point. And do that in that eastern location. Because the process was sort of modified midstream, I think it's appropriate, and as you saw in my memo, I'm recommending to the village board that we allow the public an opportunity to react to the revision. As you know, we normally make a notification to the adjoining property owners, which we have done in advance of the plan commission meeting, but that's only a couple of days in advance of the meeting. So we want to give them the opportunity to review the idea and the new site plan and have the opportunity to make those comments to the village board. So we would encourage you to continue this public hearing for one month, which is our normal advertising time period for a public hearing, our normal notice period. Continue this public hearing for a month and allow the public to review that. Additionally, during that time, staff will finalize what will become a short agreement and modification to the planned unit development document, which is a thicker document, has probably 20 or 30 pages in it. We'll make an amendment document that will institutionalize the change in the plan and show that that site is allowed for the garage.
Question on that, the garage is still just going to be for storage, for storing like lawnmowers and such items?
He has not changed the use. So his original statement was, yes, materials and equipment used on-site.
Okay, so it isn't actually a garage for anyone to put their vehicle in?
Correct. There is underground parking at this facility as well as ample above ground.
I think that's a better spot for it, frankly.
I think you may be right.
Compared to when you talked to people on-
One of the things that did come out in the original consideration by the plan commission was that in that original area, there was a fair amount of tree cover that would have to be removed, and that was a little bit of a concern. So I think we would all agree that the new site is a better location, takes advantage of some natural features on the site.
Because I know some people there, and I don't think they want to play tennis.
Probably not. Probably not.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that?
You probably will ultimately-
No, it's the first hearing, right?
It's just the beginning of the hearing at this point, so it would be appropriate to- a motion to continue the hearing would be acceptable and appropriate. I don't know if Mr. Dedenko or his wife wish to go on the record at this point, or they want to wait until next time. Okay. They've indicated no.
No comments? Do we want to make that?
I think it's appropriate.
So we make a motion to extend the public hearing to our next meeting?
No, for one month.
To the one- for one month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That will be carried through for one month.
And there's no more action for the plan commission to take? They've recommended approval. It's just really at the village board's hand to deal with the zoning change, that is, the planned unit development agreement.
So we don't need to actually read it at every meeting now?
You don't.
Until then, okay.
You don't. It's not an ordinance, it's just an agreement change.
Yeah. Okay. So there's no more action right now that we have to take, but that public hearing is open.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda are items related to your request to construct an additional silo located at 701 West Capitol Drive by Illinois Cement Company. There's the consideration of a motion to approve the site and building plans, and subsequently consideration of motion to approve the conditional use permit for all operations at 701.
I can give you a quick rundown before you put those two motions on the table, just so you remember what we're talking about. This is a- the site on West Capitol Drive, almost a Highway 83. On the south side of the street, it's sandwiched between West Capitol Drive and Veddelson and the railroad tracks. Today, this facility has one 95-foot-tall concrete- no, cement, no?
Cement, yeah.
Cement. The components, I have to get to the right component. A cement silo for distribution of that material, and it has been operating in that way for more than a couple of decades, essentially. So when they came to us and requested additional- an additional silo for a new product, a new cement product, we had to do the research to determine what their old conditional use permit said, and well, as it says in my material and as you've seen before, there was no previous conditional use permit, at least not a written permit that had been issued. So the permit that you have in front of you now, at the request of- at the recommendation of staff and at the request of the plan commission, takes into consideration the entire operation of the site, not just the new piece. So when it takes into consideration the entire site, it has the entire site as an attachment and describes the entire operation. So it limits vehicle traffic in and out of the facility, direction of travel for those vehicles essentially to and from 83, not through downtown or any other part of the village. It describes the hours of operation, dust requirements and things of that sort to allow the operation to continue lighting, those kinds of things. It's been operating for a number of years without incident, so we were not overly concerned about this in operating into the future.
My question is, this has been owned by Tewes Cement, it's also been owned by Lafarge Cement. Has this passed through each of these companies, or have we- because they've only been there, not for 20 years, I know that.
I can't tell you exactly how long Illinois Cement has owned the site, and we're talking about the site on the south side.
Yeah. Okay, on the south side.
South side, not the pit and the operation on the north side.
Since about- well, the pit went out about 1970.
Yeah.
So that- and that silo was- is that silo going to be next to the one that's there?
It is. It'll be directly west of the one that's there. They will use the same feed system, the same scale system, just the additional silo. So we're talking about the south side of the street. I can't tell you how long Illinois Cement is. I didn't research that particular aspect of it. So there- and there hasn't been a conditional use permit that has been transferred from owner to owner. There will be now, because we're describing a new one as if it were a new site, but it's an existing site.
Don't we need a public hearing for that?
For conditional use permits, the plan commission handles the public hearing. So the plan commission reviews this twice. It's a little bit- zoning matters-
Because we're not amending it, we're- okay.
Right. So zoning matters, just as a matter of reminder. Zoning matters, the village board sees twice and handles the public hearing. Conditional use permits, in other words, use permits, are handled by the plan commission twice, and they do the public hearing.
Okay.
It's the peculiarities of the code, the way it's set up. So they've done a public hearing on this, received no comments from the public at that time. So their recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit with the 14 or 15 conditions that they put in it, and any that you might have- choose to add. I will tell you that I did put in my memo that I would suggest to the village board that you add a condition that the parcels be combined. Some of you will have noticed that the property line basically cleaves through the center of the site, through the center of the operation. So there are buildings that straddle that line, there are activities that straddle that line. So I have suggested to the village board that as part of their- part of your approval process, that you condition the grant of the permit on combining of the parcels.
It must have been, when you put that Palmer Drive up, that must have split that property, because that was-
It did split the property to the north. There's been a lot of divisions in that whole area, but I'm not quite sure I followed exactly why this particular parcel or this particular site was actually two parcels.
That's really weird.
It is strange.
Because when 83 went there, there was a house sitting there where Palmer Drive goes up and-
Yeah.
We bought that.
Yeah.
So that would be my one recommendation, one additional staff recommendation.
Where are the two- I'm looking at the map with the two silos on it, and the-
North.
Oh, the one that's on the north?
The top- no, the top-down site plan? Okay, so, let me see. Yeah. So the property line is that dark dotted line that you see to the east of the office and to the east of the silos.
Yeah.
That would be to the- that would be cutting their parking lot off, and that's bad.
That's where Palmer Drive goes up. That wasn't there before. So somewhere along the line that-
Palmer Drive's up around the corner, but that's where the property division is. I guess it's not through a building at this point, but it's through some of their facilities.
But they own both?
They own both sides.
Okay.
And they are amenable to combining the parcels.
That makes sense, because then if they ever sell it, you don't have to go through something.
What difference would it make one way or another, for gas?
It just makes it so that the entire operation is operating on one parcel of land, as opposed to two parcels of land.
If there's nothing on this parcel to the east, other than the driveway it looks like and the parking?
The exit- yeah, the exits are there.
What if they wanted- I don't know how big this is, because my perception is not that good here, but could they sell part of that if they want it? I don't know if there's enough there to sell, or what's next?
They could cut- they couldn't sell everything to the east of that line, because that would cut off part of their operation, and I don't think the village would allow that. But they could re-divide the parcel if they wanted to and cut, for example, that far eastern end off.
Well, I'm just wondering, yeah, I- that's what I'm talking about. I mean, I don't see one reason to-
Well, see, well, they would-
I just wouldn't want there to be something, a roadblock for them in the future.
It wouldn't be, because they'd have to go through a CSM process anyway.
Okay.
Because if they were going to cut a piece off, they would have to change that property line anyway.
Okay.
See, that makes sense, because they've been trying to sell that and develop it, and with that two sections, all of a sudden, somebody buys one section of it with, you know, so it makes one big piece of property. And then if it isn't cement anymore, then they'd have to sell the whole thing.
They would sell the whole thing, and a new operation could come in if there was a decision made to allow part of that to be cut off. They could do that at that time.
I hope I live long enough to see them develop that pit in the back.
Pit to the north?
Yeah, because they've been dumping concrete in there for 35 years and-
Just to the east, is that where the White Elm Nursery used to be?
No.
Correct. East of that- immediately east of this parcel is the White Elm Nursery. Keep in mind, we're on the south side of Capitol.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure that's where they're-
Yep, you are correct.
You want two motions?
If you wish to combine them, that's fine.
Oh, then I'll make a motion to approve the site and building plans and the conditional use permit with the modification of combining both parcels into the conditional use permit into one, yeah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is granted. The motion is carried, I should say. The next item on the agenda are items related to the rezoning, or the proposed rezoning of Summit Lake Apartment Complex, north of Hill Street. Properties on the north side of Hill Street, between 250 and 420, 250 and 420, and all properties on Hill Court, east of Hill Street, to the RM-1 multifamily residential district.
What are they thinking?
Everybody follow that.
Are they going to try to build along that top or level?
No.
Years ago, that's what they were, that made nice lots, but I don't know how you get to it.
So there is no- no new development activity going on, no new construction being requested. This, I'm sure, the initial request came in, and I'm sure that it relates entirely to financing of the property. They're perhaps trying to refinance or do some planning or what have you, and they came to the village, and here I'm speaking of the owners of the Summit Lake Apartments. They came to the village and requested certification of what their zoning was. And that's where staff identified that there was a problem created, we believe, in 2012, when the village updated its zoning map on a village-wide scale. That was right after we had done the comprehensive plan update, and at that point, we adopted a new zoning map that's- that covered the entire village to try and update all of the zoning to be current.
Because it'd be pretty hard to build anything on that strip, basically.
It would be. Yeah, there's a fair amount of topography there.
What is it zone right now?
It is currently zone RM3, and as you can see from the materials that I showed you or that I put in the packet, it- that entire area north of Hill Street is zone RM3, as well as some of the properties to the south of Hill Street and Hill Court. RM3 relates to condominium zoning, basically owner-occupied units in a multifamily setting, which is not what we have here. These are all renter-occupied units, both in Summit Lake, which actually, folks, is covered by a PUD, just so you see that. But RM1 is the underlying zoning in that PUD, as well as the existing apartment units that are on Hill Street and Hill Court on the north side, as well as one that happens to be on the south side of Hill Court.
Because that was changed so they could put condos on that part to the west.
Correct. The very- the very end of this area that's showing as RM3 is the Windstone- Windstone Condos. And they are properly zoned RM3. I suspect what happened here is when that was zoned RM3, somehow it accidentally got picked up for the entire area, and that whole zoning area got changed. It shouldn't have. The previous zoning map shows that area clearly as RM1, and that was the proper use. The PUD agreement that describes Summit Lakes describes the underlying zoning as P- as RM1.
So in other words, when those condos- because I remember them coming to the board for the condos from Summit Lake.
Yeah.
And then that wasn't rezoning, I thought it was rezoning that so that you could put condos in.
It was. There was probably a CSM or some land division that took place at that point to cut off the parcel that ultimately became Windstone. And it was zoned RM3 with a PUD overlay, so that it could be condominiums at a certain density.
That's what I thought.
And that was what was developed, but somehow that zoning was accidentally carried over to the other area where there are rentals. So basically, we've uncovered a mistake, and during the process, the plan commission identified a desire to correct some additional parcels, and so if the village board is amenable to this, you have the draft of the ordinance that would affect this change. You could do first reading on that and then set the public hearing, again, because you do zoning hearings, set that public hearing for essentially a month from today, or a month- the meeting that-
So there really isn't any way they can add any more to that complex?
No.
Without really some work?
They would have to come back through and change their PUD agreement, which would then go through the process of the plan commission and village board and hearing.
I was just thinking, because they wanted to put houses along that ravine on the topsy at one time.
Like I said, there's some topography there.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. I so moved that we- what would be the first reading? What would be the word?
First reading of the ordinance. You don't have to do anything, that just can go by, but your motion would be to set the public hearing for a month from today.
Okay, then what- then the motion would be to set the public hearing for a month today on that rezoning of Summit Hills?
It's been moved and seconded for that public hearing on September 25. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, and you do not need to go back on the other reading.
Nope.
And it's okay.
You just acknowledge that it's the first reading, and you've done that, and all that does is describe in words what I've just described.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to renew the environmental corridor and open space task force and its membership through December 31, 2017, to allow it to complete and present its report to the village board.
A little over a year ago, the village board created the environmental corridor and open space task force?
A task force was formed. We've been meeting monthly on that and developing recommendations. What we'd like to do is have a little more time in order to complete the report, make a presentation to the park and recreation board, and also the village board with the recommendations. The task force voted at the last meeting to request the village board extend their services and through the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to extend to the end of the year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Anybody have any announcements? Announcements?
Helen, you want to announce Lynn's open house?
Sure. As a reminder, we have an open house for Lynn Meyer, for her retirement, which will be Tuesday. We're having that from 12 to 3, right here in the village boardroom. So welcome to attend.
Not tomorrow, Tuesday after Labor Day.
Next Tuesday. Yes, that's tomorrow, next Tuesday.
We're going to have cake.
Should I get you a cake too? Well, have cake.
It was coming, I knew it was coming. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting adjourned. Thank you for tuning in, thank you for coming. Thank you, Lynn. Aye. This meeting adjourned. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Lynn.